Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 10, 2010 zoning commission meeting. Let the record show that all members are present. Public comment period. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on any item not on the zoning agenda, please come No one wishing to comment. Public comment period is closed. Acceptance of the minutes from the October 13, 2010 zoning meeting.
Motion second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Clouat, seconded by Commissioner Nance. Any opposition? Motion carries. Item number five, public hearing to amend the Ascension Parish Development Code for Recommendation. Zoning Review ID 2118.10, Lot 11, Tanglewood subdivision for Paul and Martha Johnson. And who's going to present?
Hi Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for having us. My name is Erin Lanue. I'm an attorney and I've been asked by Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, the property owners, to represent them in the initial presentation of their application for a zoning change. First, I want to talk about a little bit of history of this property. They've owned this property since 1976. It is on Highway 621. I did send, we prepared a packet of materials that the secretary passed around to you guys and I'll just reference them throughout the presentation. I didn't realize they had an overhead projector, so I hope you don't mind if I just refer to your packets instead of using the technology. This property, I think the theme we want to, you know, put before you tonight has always had commercial aspects to it. Ever since they bought the property in 1976, Mr. Johnson has had a car restoration business all through the eighties, DreamWorks Restoration. And the initial, you know, the top of your packet, you'll see an occupational license for DreamWorks Restorations at the property address, 374-38, Highway 621. He was actually approved to be a salesman of Louisiana Used Motor Vehicles and Parts in 1999 and he did operate a used vehicle lot for some, a period of a couple of years in 1999, 2000 range. Actually, the used car lot was on the particular portion of the corner of the property that we're here about tonight that now has the metal building that's in contention tonight. They also have operated Pro Gold products. That's also, if you flip through, they have an occupational license through the parish to operate Pro Gold products on the property. They actually, they have two metal buildings, one for the car repair shop that was built in the eighties. Aside from their residence, they have a second metal building that was built in 2000 to store equipment through their Pro Gold business. Because of this, they always thought that Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, that they were on commercial property. They realize, they do remember attending zoning meetings when zoning went into place in 1999 time range. And Mr. Johnson did attend some of the meetings and they understood that if you were commercial before zoning went into place, you were going to stay commercial and his property would not be affected. He does not recall ever being told that it was only affected, you know, it was only going to be permitted for certain uses only. He didn't, he thought it was, if you were commercial, you were always commercial. How do we get to this point where we're at today? In April of 2010, Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Johnson formed an LLC called Tiger Martial Arts. He went and got a building permit from the parish to build a metal building at the corner of the property, close to the Highway 621 road frontage. Building permit was issued. They actually did search around. They thought, their initial choice was not to build the facility on their residence property. They, he looked around at strip malls, any commercial opportunities for rental properties and just everything was too expensive and cost prohibitive for him to do that. And so, he did get an occupational permit through the parish, that's in your packet as well, for Tiger Martial Arts at the, you know, the business address at the Highway 621 address where his residence is. They built, they built their building, went into occupancy with it, started holding, what they do is have, you know, they teach martial arts, have kids classes, some adult classes, a lot of self-defense type of uses at the property. They do some yoga as well. Tiger Fit Yoga operates there. Basically, the zoning change, what we're seeking is to go from RM, which is what it exists, to MU2. Their property, I think what screams in their favor is that their property actually borders a mixed-use commercial property. It's not, wouldn't be classified as spot zoning or anything of that nature. It would not change the character of the area at all. Mr. and Mrs. Johnson went the extra mile whenever they designed this building that fit the character of their house and their surrounding neighbors. As I stated, it directly, property directly borders a mixed-use district. It's essentially at the intersection of L Landry Road on the opposite side of 621. If you're aware, you know, the Hutch's Hardware Strip Mall, there's actually a karate tenant in the Hutch's Hardware Strip Mall already, so that just kind of gives you an indication that this is nowhere, this is not out of the ordinary for what's already located in the direct vicinity of their property. And on the same side of 621, I guess, the north side of 621, there's the property where P&amp;J's is located and there's a Weight Watchers and another strip mall, just in the tractor two next to their property that's already existing. And if you look at just what the definition of mixed-use, and I know that you're aware of it, but just to state it for the record, you know, allows limited commercial, retail and service establishment in areas where surrounding neighborhoods is predominantly residential and that the character and operation of which are compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. And I think that if any situation would fit mixed-use too, I think this situation definitely would fit that criteria. Want to refer to the picture, the color pictures in your packet, but we've, I've put in numerical order. Exhibit one, you see, has a picture, you're looking east, you can see the sign, a Tiger Martial Arts sign here. And that's the building that we're, that we're talking about, that they're operating the karate classes in the evenings. You can see, looking east, you can kind of see where you're, you're heading toward the commercial Hutch's Hardware on the opposite side. Two is a close-up look at the, at the building and you can see it, you know, fits in with the color scheme of the neighborhood and the residences that surround it. Another, exhibit three is just a little bit closer look at what you're heading upon going east. They're on their, this is a picture taken from their property. Exhibit four shows, you're actually at the, you're still on their property, right on the edge of their property and you're still kind of looking toward, I guess, southeast. And you can see the Hutch's Hardware across. It actually matches in color scheme to the Tiger Martial Arts building that they put on their property. Exhibit five, you can see the intersection of, okay.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. Makes it easier. Yeah, you can see the intersection of L Landry Road and looking now toward the Johnson's property, you can actually see, I'm going to put a circle, you can see their Tiger Martial Arts signs. It shows where, how close they are to L Landry Road and the, where the mixed-use, existing mixed-use commercial property zone borders. Exhibit six is still the intersection of L Landry Road. Now you're looking west and you can see the Tiger Martial Arts sign, the building in the background. Exhibit seven, I wanted to show you, I think it's important because it shows that there's a, for sale sign. This is looking west toward LA 73. You can see that there's a for sale sign and it's, the next exhibit shows a close-up, a zoom of that sale sign. It's for sale commercial. And right now, there's no commercial establishment on this particular property. It is zone mixed-use too, but it's advertised for sale, so you can imagine that, that there's going to be a commercial building there soon. Nine again shows just that, that's actually parking lot of Hutch's Hardware looking out and you can see the for sale sign that we just looked at for the close-up. The next picture is just going, heading east from the car, you can see that's, that's the Johnson's residence on the left-hand side and then the Tiger Martial Arts building on the right-hand side of the property.
Okay, you've got about 30 seconds.
Exhibit 11, you can see, you know, again, looking east, you can see definitely, you're right in front on the road of their property. Hutch's Hardware, it's commercial establishments on the left. Now, if you, I'll flip a few more. Exhibit 13, going forward, this is actually, the White House is a, not even a house, it's a building that they're operating, a snowball stand and catering business and it's in a, it's not in a mixed-use zone, it's in a residential zone.
Okay, I think it's time. Commissioners, have any questions, comments?
I'd like to ask a question of staff. The young lady made mention that there was some previous construction on their property and they got permits for these buildings. I would be interested as to the nature of that permit. Was it permitted as a private structure, a commercial structure? Was the fire marshal involved, which would normally be for a commercial?
Mr. Johnson came in on the 4/19/2010 and obtained a permit for a personal storage building as a residential homeowner. And no time has it ever been considered as commercial on the permitting. If you do permitting, you do have to go through the state fire marshal first, border health, have planning reviews for it, meet the Louisiana State Building Codes, get permitted to construct and have inspections. I haven't even had any inspections on this building, even as a residential structure.
A martial arts training facility. In my mind, that's kind of like a gym, you know. How would you categorize it in the code? What are the uses, what use would you apply to it?
I would say that it's a commercial school. Kind of like a dance academy?
Yes, sir.
So they would also need a contract agreement assuming that this was rezoned?
As a commercial school.
Education facilities, commercial school?
There's actually another one that states underneath the commercial.
I'm sorry?
There's another use underneath, commercial uses that states, commercial school.
I wanted to just ask if we could have a little bit more time on our presentation. Mr. Johnson, I know, wants to say a few words following myself and there's just a zoning, there's a zoning.
He can comment, but we'll have some questions. There'll be time for him to rebuttal.
Maybe I can show it for rebuttal, but there's a zoning map that I attached that I just wanted, I could take a minute. And when I talked to Mr. Brock, told him we were coming, we weren't aware that there was a time limitation on the initial presentation.
I think, we're smart enough to figure it all out. We'll, we'll probably ask you here in a minute.
You are correct. It is a contract agreement for a commercial school. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You need one? Or you have one?
No, sir, we need one.
Yeah, okay.
All right, so issue number one, the used is building and you're currently using it as a martial arts.
Maybe I should stand up here and answer some of these questions, but you're directing at her and she doesn't know all the details.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
And I am Paul Johnson, I own the property. And I'll be honest with you, when I walked down this path to build this building, I thought I did everything right, which I found out out of ignorance, I didn't, okay?
That's quite right.
There's a lot of things along the line that I messed up with. I've had long talks with both Lance and Laverne and we both, Laverne especially has set out, we've, we've resolved the differences that once we get past the issue of the zoning, everything else will be corrected, period. I mean, whatever is necessary to do, bring it up to code, whatever. The contractual agreement, I have no earthly idea what you're talking about. I would like to know a little more about that.
I'll let staff, I'll let staff expand on it, but go ahead.
Contract agreement, it just deals with traffic and drainage concerns. So any traffic and drainage concerns, that, right now, there is a drainage ordinance, so you would have to meet that anyway. So that would take care of the drainage concerns that we would have. The other thing would deal with, would be traffic. And based on your building that, or the use, if you get past the zoning that you would be, be required to do, would be pretty minimum, I'm going to say.
Well, I'm not, I'll do whatever is necessary, but the issue that I have on this, if you would give me just a few minutes to, to talk to you about why we're in this position we're in. I have lived on this property since 1976. I opened up a business, I had a business in Baton Rouge that I ran since 1971. I've been self-employed ever since then up until this present day. I moved my business home in 1982 or thereabouts because I got tired of fighting Baton Rouge. I got tired of fighting the regulations. I mean, they have one thing after another, after another. Finally, they come up with an ordinance, this is why I had to pay taxes on my own tools every year. So essentially, I rented my tools from Baton Rouge if I stayed there. I quit. I picked up, I moved home and I moved home, there was absolutely no issues about the zoning. I built my building, I've worked ever since then in the back. I've had no problem with the zoning. My neighbors have no problems with it. Well, I've added two more businesses since then. And in every time that I've added a business, that I've approached with the, with doing everything I thought I was supposed to be doing at the time, never a zoning issue, not one time. I built this little school, all I wanted was just a small building, small workout area. When this started out, it started out with my son and I and nobody else because the type of martial arts we teach will never be big, will never run 100 classes. We just don't teach that. We teach a very serious type of martial art and a lot of people just don't like it. A lot of people don't like the pain that we can inflict on them and we teach them to inflict on other people and that's just the nature of the beast. So our school right now basically is running about as big as it's going to be. We have about 20 students. That's the reason why we're on our front yard. We tried to find a location somewhere in the parish that we could afford to rent, it was infeasible. I mean, it just wasn't possible. We teach two nights a week, two hours, those two nights a week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays and no other classes. Any other time, you can ride by, the gentleman's been there before, it sits idle. It's nobody uses, except for my daughter, I apologize. She wanted to teach yoga, so she teaches on Mondays Wednesday nights and Wednesday nights for one hour and one hour only. So you're talking about a total of the whole week long, six hours that we use this building. Now again, I can say, I know I made some mistakes along the way getting it built and all, but as far as the zoning issues, I've always felt that I was well within my rights to put that business there. And I talk about the building. The building's a different issue, I can say, we'll have to solve that problem and we've already agreed to work through all that and I'll do whatever's necessary. But when it comes to the zoning issue, I have a serious problem with the way it's zoned. First off, I was there.
Okay, that's, that's good.
This is, this is, this is a part of the argument that I'm here for, sir.
What time, when, first time you moved your building here, what year was it? I mean, when you moved your first business down here, which?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two.
There was no zoning then, I know that.
Okay.
The other two businesses came after zoning. But where I have an issue with, I went to the zoning meetings in the, I forgot what date it was, but someone's in the mid nineties. Were they, ninety-one? Well, when I, when I, I went to those meetings that they had the local fire station and they told us what they were going to do with the land when they were going to zone. I had no problems with it because they told us that we were protected. I had a business there, my property would be commercial, no problems at all. And since then, is why I went with the two other businesses on the property and I've never had a zoning issue at all. I've always been under the assumption that it was commercial. I learned I wasn't commercial when I called the parish to get a separate address for that building. And I was informed by a young lady that you weren't commercial, you can't have a separate address. We got into a discussion on the phone, not an argument, a discussion. And let me tell you something else too. If I talk fast and I speak loud, I apologize. I wear two hearing aids, I was born this way, it's a birth defect and it's just a speech that I have to deal with. So if I'm sounding like I'm coming across real fast and hard and it's loud, I apologize. But that's not the way, it's just, to me, I sound normal.
You're doing fine.
Well, I get a little nervous too and I start hugging faster and faster.
A little passion in your voice, but I understand.
Well, it's, it's, it means something to me.
I understand.
If it wasn't for these young kids, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't care about it. I fell in love with these kids, we started teaching and that's why I'm here to fight for what I consider my rights as an individual landholder in this city. My next-door neighbor, directly on the side of me, when we would change to zoning, and this I've never figured out, I have an existing business, commercial, just, it's a business. I restore cars, I fix cars that are wrecked. My next-door neighbor has never had a business entity ever own it, ever. They make him commercial, they make me residential. Now where is the reasoning behind that? Now he's selling his property and from what I understand, he has sold his property. He's been living on it, she rides her horses, Johnny and, I mean, Jeff and Bonnie Burns, they have sold their property. Somebody is fixing to develop that commercially on my property line and yet I have to fight to get my little school to stay up in the front. I would say, I apologize if I get emotional, but that's just the way I look at it.
We get the picture.
Sir?
We get the picture, we're good.
Okay. I hope you get the picture in a positive way though, that's what we're looking for.
We have probably a lot of people that want to comment too. Any questions, comments?
Staff, specifically Mr. Brock, recommendation is to deny. You care to elaborate?
Yes, sir. Staff believes that at this time where mixed-use or commercial is at that intersection, that that is, at this time, the area that we feel comfortable with keeping commercial or keeping mixed-use.
Mr. Boujwa, is there anything that you, you start or commenting, is there anything that you care to add that you, you know, other than what you've already told us?
No, just my issue that the gentleman has submitted over 200 pictures to the building department that we can work the issues out when it comes time to, if and in fact, the decision of the commission tonight that anything with building aspect that he, he has agreed to comply with as far as the state and parish building codes are concerned.
Thank you. In other words, you, fire marshal, everything, everything would be okay, under your president's...
He'd have to make those measures to get taken care of.
All right.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment? Please, please do so and you'll have three minutes.
I shouldn't need that long. I am Paul Johnson Jr., son of the man who just came up here. I have been in the martial arts for about 21 years. I've been teaching it for about 13, 14, 15, 16-ish years. What I would say is that we provide a, what I would call an invaluable service to the area and its people because not only do we teach these kids and give these kids an outlet for, I guess, extrovertness, you know, we, we have a lot of kids come in that are introverted and don't talk and have issues with like general compatibility with the rest of the people around them. We help with that, we give them self-confidence, we give them an outlet for any potential aggression that needs to be put on a bag. We give them that kind of need and attention to what they, they have. And we also teach the people that protect and serve. We teach law enforcement, we teach people that need this material that we give across to not only protect us, but protect them protecting us. So, there's that. I've had two, actually I've had three people in our tutelage that have used the things that we have taught them to their life moving forward. Like they have been in a situation where if they did not use it, they would have a problem existing further. So, huh?
In their defense.
I'm sorry, in their defense, sorry. I too have had a problem with words here. So, again, with the residential-ish things notwithstanding, he's had the building there for all this time, he's had two businesses running there, one of which was a car dealership, which was pretty much out there in the middle of nowhere as a commercial area, I mean, you're selling cars. And for not to be rezoned as commercial, it's kind of silly just because it's sitting right next to another one and it is a commercial use facility. So, and, am I leaving anything?
Okay, thank you.
I'm good, thanks.
Jeffrey Griffin?
Oh, Jeffrey Griffin.
Some of the people came in, like, can they sign in now? Because there's a link up there.
Yep.
Good evening, how y'all doing this evening?
Good.
Come on, guys. I'd like to introduce my family, first of all. How I play a role in this is, I'm next-door neighbors with Mr. Paul, good man.
Which, which side? I'm curious.
The little white house. I'm between him and the for sale sign there.
Okay.
So I have commercial on both sides.
You're the guy I wanted to hear from, good.
Basically, how this started was with the school, I'm on a different aspect of it. And in fact, we did look around for a commercial building. Problem is, we both agreed that we didn't want this 150 to 200 facility for our kids to go to. Kind of wanted, he's got a grandson, wanted to pass what he's learned on to him and I have two sons and my little girl, I wanted to pass what I know on to them. And that's, that's really how it started with, with three or four people. Well, we have friends, a couple of friends and, you know, they've started, I guess, three months ago, four months ago. They've been here for about two hours. I got them from seven years, years old to about 15. Y'all stand up for me real quick. They've been real good and I'd like to give them a round of applause for being so well for you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you. But it just started off small and we were in, we were thinking that this would be, you know, 20, 25 people max. We don't want to spend $2,000 a month in overhead or 3,000, you know how that goes with business. We just wanted something small. So that's, that's why we're here. You know, it's a small overhead, 20, 25, 30 people. I still, we still have people calling about enrolling, but we're kind of hesitant on that, you know, because we don't want a big school. We, we kind of want a small school that we can give individual attention to the kids and actually, I think that is positive for them. You know, as a, I'm, I'm a law enforcement deputy as well out here in Ascension. It saved my life. I pull my gun every day, you know, I use it. But the thing that saved my life is martial arts. And this building, I believe, if I can pass it on 25, 30 people, I believe I've done my job. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lance, now he's the little triangle.
Correct, yes, sir, he's the little triangle.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so he's actually not, I mean, he's residential.
That's correct.
He's right there.
Yep.
Good evening, councilmen and women. My name is Marty Johnson and I am the yoga instructor at Tiger Martial Arts. I have about five permanent members of my group right now and then I do have anywhere from two, one or two individuals that do come in spur of moment. And my members range from high schoolers to educators and every time I take a, every time I give a class, they do tell me at the end of class what a benefit it is for them. And recently, I've been approached by Sunshine Pages in Gonzales, excuse me. I'm talking fast to you, daddy, I get it from you. And they told me that there's not a yoga place advertising right now in Ascension Parish. And I think, since being the only yoga place, I do give a benefit for that. And again, I'm only two hours a week, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. I would just like to reiterate what everyone here has already said. This is a small quaint facility, it's a quiet operation. It fits in with the environment where it sits and as you can see, it obviously is having a positive impact on the community. So I'd ask you to seriously consider approving it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sammy Robinson, this is my son Caleb Robinson. A little bit about myself, I've been studying under Jeff Griffin since 1993 off and on, went in the military, went in combat zones, Bosnia. I've, from what I've learned from him, I've used in those situations. After being discharged from the military, I got into law enforcement and I have been in that now for 13 years. Been under Mr. Paul ever since I became a police officer because his style of martial arts is more apt to what a police officer uses day in and day out in a line of work. If I have to lay hands on someone, it needs to be handled quickly and the suspect needs to be subdued. Because of money restraints being what they are in the economy, my department is only allowing me four hours once a year for defensive tactics. Four hours, once a year, for defensive tactics. Mr. Paul, being the good man that he is, he's not out here to make money. He never has been and he's always said that when we were having to go to clubs where he would piggyback on other schools and they would want to force me into a, basically a... other schools and they would want to force me into a, basically a contract saying that I must pay so much amount. Well, I'm a police officer. I don't make enough to spend $200 a month to go study something that might protect my life. Mr. Paul has always helped me out with that. Having this experience with him and with Jeff, I want to pass that on to my son. So recently, my son, along with three other boys from his den, Cub Scout den, joined out of me pleading with Mr. Paul to please allow him to come in. To watch this man work with these kids, it's like watching my father work with his grandkids. I mean, he, he sets a good example, he expects discipline, he expects respect from these kids, they show it. He gives them self-esteem. Some of these kids, I, one of the little fellows, being with Caleb coming up, he's really opening up because of this, because of the whole experience. He was an extreme introvert. And just these last four months, that young man has really blossomed into more self-confident, standing up for himself, taking pride in himself. And I think it'd be a shame if we had to close this school down. And I just, I'd appreciate it if y'all would consider zoning this to where we can keep this school up and running. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Joe Barton, this is my son Jayden, if you can see him here. After my time in the military in Iraq and Afghanistan, I realized the value of learning hand-to-hand combat for your safety. I too am a law enforcement officer, I work here in the parish. And after I got out of the military, I decided I wanted to move to Ascension Parish because of the school systems, what it provided the future for my son. He's a straight A student in here in Ascension Parish, but he was a bit of an introvert. I needed something to bring that out. I work with Jeff Griffin on a nightly basis and I've been in life and death situations with him and I trust him with my life. And the only thing that I value more than my life is my son's life. And he's learned so much at this school, it's invaluable for him in his future. So, I appreciate it if you guys could consider keeping this school open. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bert Vadrain. My son is in Tiger Martial Arts. He is also kind of a timid child, you know, you holler at him, he used to just cry. Martial arts has gave him a lot of self-esteem, he's gotten nowhere, you know, he's, he's a lot more outgoing. It's just really a positive situation for these kids. They get in, Mr. Paul works with these kids individual, one-on-one, if they need extra help. It's, it's just really, a really good situation. And I really hate to see y'all shut this school down for such a simple thing. Issues with the commercial property, he's saying that he didn't believe that it should be commercial because of the area and the traffic flow and all that. Well, we got commercial right across the street, commercial right next door. I think we way beyond the commercial problems in that area. That little bit of flow traffic that's coming through from that school is not going to cause a problem. It's been going on for the past several months, hadn't had any accidents. I don't think that we're going to have a problem with the little bit of flow of that, that school. So, I just ask you all to consider this, surely not consider it because zoning problems are, traffic flow and all that, just consider the kids and what these people are doing. Like I said, they're not out to make a killing, they're out to just do good things. So, just, just keep that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Roth. I've been a student of Paul Johnson's for about four years. There's a big issue today with the, with kids, suicide because of bullying. Most of them have no esteem, most of them have no confidence. He's not training kids to go out and become the bullies. He's training kids to maybe defend the ones that are being bullied. If not for the kids, this place wouldn't even be open. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Cooper. I live next door to Paul Johnson, on the west side. I've been there 13 years. And every day when I walk out of my house, I see his little building out there. And it don't bother me, I have no problem with it. The only thing that I can tell you is he's trying to help the kids and they all need help, we're all aware of that. And whatever we can do to help them, I'd appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
I'm Jack Harless. I've been a student of Paul for, on and off, for about four or five years. All I can tell, I've known Paul practically my whole life. If he tells you he'll comply with whatever you guys need, I can assure you he will. He does provide a service for the kids, I can't add anything to what these people have said. But I can tell you, up until he built this building, he and his son both taught at other facilities and always at no charge. So it's not about the money. Just take that in consideration, please.
All right, thank you. All right. No one else, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I have a question for Lance. Lance, on this map, you have this in, in pink, all of this commercial, zone commercial?
Yes, sir, that's mixed use, yes, sir.
Mixed use commercial?
Yes, sir.
And what about, what about the little triangle? It's mixed use too?
What triangle?
No, that's the one I asked about.
No, that's, that's.
The little corner right here, that's the one that was advertised as for sale for commercial?
No, that's not the one that's being advertised. That's being advertised, it's between lots, 5C and that little triangle piece.
Oh, okay. Well, the little triangle, what is it, is residential?
Yes, sir, it's residential, yes, sir.
Now, if I understand your objection to this zoning application is, is because you feel that it's adequate commercial land. But you've got a significant intersection there, what would be the objection of incorporating both the triangle piece and this applicant's piece? I mean, all of the commercial piece, south of the highways, for practical purposes, developed. And a good bit of it on the north is already commercial and used. So essentially, you've only got one and a half parcels that are residential.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm looking for an opinion here.
Well, my opinion is, I think that it's sufficient at this time for what it is. If you, I mean, if you state that, then there's continue, continue, continue. I mean, that's, that's my feeling.
Well, a piece of property across on the south side of, well, this would be the southwest side of 621. I believe that property came before us earlier this year, late last year for a daycare and was recommended denial on that also. So we've already denied some property in this area. And then, earlier this year, I had the opportunity to talk with a couple of, a couple of individuals that are in the know, as far, and the state is not going to make any improvements to 621. At least not in the near future. We don't know if or when they will ever do that. So, I, and Mr. Brock's recommendation is based on, I think, sound knowledge.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't know what you're going to rebuttal, everybody was in favor for you. You can rebuttal if somebody comes up and says they don't want it, but nobody said that yet. Yeah, we'll give you a little time, yeah, just, just, I'll hear if anybody's got comments.
I'm really torn because if this was for profit, I would, I would be absolutely against it if you were just wanting to sell your property. But because of, because it is a school, then it's just a different situation to me, I'm really torn. I understand, Lance, I understand your situation, I understand what you're saying, but I feel like there's other circumstances involved. I want to listen to what y'all have to say.
I guess I'm, you know, I also have an issue with, you know, this is a property that's had commercial use on it for quite some time. I mean, this gentleman has been full of practical purposes, building cars there. I mean, restoration of cars is, it's essentially building a car from an old rust heap. Well, I happen to be familiar with that because my brother-in-law does that.
Well, you know the work is in detail there.
In detail. I know how expensive it is too. But, you know, this is a property that's got a commercial use in it, has had a commercial use even before zoning was in place, albeit a non-conforming use. I mean, this is an opportunity to make it, make it conforming and legal. And it's contiguous to existing commercial property. I just, but for a triangular piece of property which is, is at the intersection, I would almost encourage that property owner to jump in and include it.
He was here, but he didn't, he'll be back, maybe. All right, Mr. Paul, if you want, you want to say something?
Yes, sir. I'd like to just address one thing Mr. Martin just said. There was an issue with the property directly across the street from us, it was a large daycare center. I was here at that meeting, I came to it. The problem with, the reason why it was turned down was simply because the gentleman was not willing to scale it back. He was, from what I understand and listened to the meeting, for X amount of, you know, square footage you have on a piece of property, you get X amount of size building because of the prop, I mean, because of the parking concerns and such. This gentleman wanted three times the size building being built there. He was going to have permanently 20 full-time employees there alone for the traffic. My, my neighbors here were also, Jeff only, I mean, I'm sorry, Bobby and Terry were here for that same meeting, I can verify this. He was only turned down for one reason, one reason only. I'm not sure if you sat at the head of that meeting or not, but whoever was the chairman of that meeting tried to walk that gentleman through to get the zoning done. And the issue was his size. They were even, they addressed him to say that if he would reduce his size down to whatever the appropriate property size would allow, they would give him the zoning that night and even recommended he come back to the variance committee if he wanted to expand at a later date. The gentleman just was not willing to, I mean, to come down. He wanted that size or nothing because he said, and I remember I being here and all, again, I'm getting extremely nervous and all. He wasn't willing to scale down because he said he couldn't make the money he needed to to build a daycare center there and buy that piece of property. That's the reason why that piece of property directly across the street from me right now is not a commercial piece of property. That is the reason why I got shot down. It was because of that gentleman refusal to work with y'all on the size. I'm willing to work with anyone, anything y'all tell me to do to get this thing done right.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
I want to ask Laverne a question. Laverne, if we go ahead and approve this and go ahead and make a motion to approve it and give him what he makes use to, the building has been built. In other words, you can work with him and do all of the details that require him to have that building there under the new ruling.
That's correct. The first question I had to Mr. Johnson was, when he built the building, was he aware that it would require inspections? That's my biggest issue at the time, about the inspections as a building department. You know, besides the issue of the zoning and so forth, what we've been discussing. So I asked Mr. Johnson, did y'all take any pictures? And this whole packet is of pictures.
Yes, sir.
That I can work with to identify proper installation of, always from foundations through. The building is still there, I can still work within the plumbing and the electrical aspects of it. And, and it only has window units in the, in the building. His hurdles would be to have licensed contracts come back and permit properly. I think it would be in order if attorney agrees to, to do the penalties that's required by ordinance when you build without proper permitting. So, and, and me and Mr. Paul have discussed that and he's willing to do the whole nine yards. He did go to the board of health, he installed a new MODAD system which he tied into his house and the building, which was an upgrade from an old septic system that he had. So that's an improvement. The one issue that came to my mind when I was looking at the, the pictures that the attorney showed was the sign. He would have to get a sign permit also. I think all the issues on the building department side can be covered pending the decision of the council and then to the, I'm sure you got to go back to the council.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve his request, contingent and all the facts and everything that's in detail with all of this and that he meets all the requirements for the building department and go forward.
All right. I'll second it, but I, just to, I'll second it for discussion, but I, I'd like for you to modify that, this, we're actually making a motion to recommend approval to the.
That's what I'm talking, yeah, recommend, recommend.
This will go to the council from here.
Sir?
If, if we vote to approve, or whatever action we take, actually, it goes to the council. It's not over, but, and then work with, with staff here.
We're more confused.
I know you are. I'm just letting you know, don't, it's not, it's not over, if, whatever happened to you.
But is it a good step forward?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
It is. All right, I have a motion to approve to council by Commissioner Cluwatt, seconded by Commissioner Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. Congratulations and happy Veterans Day to you guys.
I'd like to, if I may, sir, let me just make a comment to you, martial arts.
You can't hear me.
You can't hear me.
No, we get to do it. One, one more comment, come here.
I, I just want to make a comment to you and to the rest of the folks that said something about martial arts. As I was listening to you speak, I have to tell you that I have three sons, all of them very introverted, very meek, not, not your jocks, not your football players, or your basketball players.
That's normally who we get.
Kind of like Julio.
And all three of them are black belts and one of them is currently a national champion in taekwondo.
That's good.
So I'm, I share your comments.
Excuse me, who do I have to go to now for that stuff?
The man with the red shirt.
Hang on, hang on, wait, before you do that, we still got, one more. Zoning commission subcommittee?
We didn't have a meeting.
Didn't have a meeting? All right.
We'll, we'll next month.
Okay, item number seven.
Adjourned.
We are adjourned.